Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, and to the Republic, the Constitution, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everyone. It's our pleasure to conduct our board meeting here tonight at West Hamlin Elementary. And we look forward to hearing the three LSIC presentation that we're going to have this evening along with our regular visits. But before we start, I would like to introduce the members of the Board of Education, or any that may not know them, when we're at home, so to speak, kind of like ball people. We've got a name tag there everywhere you can see it, in case they don't know. But as far in, to my right is Larry Wilkinson. Beside, next person down from Larry is Vice President of the Board, Fred Curry. This gentleman beside of me is Superintendent Jeff McKit. My name is Steve Greasley. This Rodney Rowdy Baker. He's got three names, whether he likes her or not, and Carol Smith. And once again, we're all, we're glad to be here tonight. We look forward to some presentations we're going to hear. I think Mr. Jonah Atkins is going to talk to us about some festival data that has recently been received. So we'll hear some of that for the first time. We'll be hearing it for the first time, just like you all will. Then after that, we will proceed with the LSIC presentations. And those that have to go first, the schools should go first. We certainly understand that you have more pressing business and would like to go along with that rather than stay for others. Although, you're welcome to stay for the entire board meeting. Most of our business items will conduct after all of the LSIC meeting, all those things are over. But once again, we want to thank those here at West Hamlin. Mr. Wilk, thank you all for hosting this. All those that had something to do with the food or take that we received, we thank you for that. I hope that ice cream worked out well today. Is everyone satisfied? But we do appreciate that we come to the schools. The hospitality, it's always shown to us. That's very, we look at it in more than one way, you know, it keeps us nourished, perky, ready to go. And also, we noticed you're taking notice, and we appreciate that. So with that said, I want to go down to the approval of the amendments of the September the 4th, 2018 record meeting. I need a motion to approve those. Mr. Baker?
Second.
Ms. Smith. Is that a long yes, no?
Yes.
Okay. Now, we have a paper sheet somewhere, Mr. Wilk, don't we? For those of you who don't know, if you haven't, you don't have to get that. I don't like to put two names on it. But just for explanation purposes, in order to be on the board agenda, and for the board to be able to have a discussion back to back with you on any topic, you must be on our agenda. As you know, the open meetings law requires that all public entities, the Board of Education included, obviously, must turn or put their agendas out a minimum of three working days before the meeting. The day of the meeting counts as one of those days. So typically, we put our agendas out on a Thursday for a Tuesday meeting. And Ms. Susan McCann is our Executive Secretary now, and she sees that that's done. Now, should anyone ever want to be on the board agenda, we ask that you contact Mr. McKit's office, talk to Mrs. McCann, and ask to be on the agenda. And that way, we ask to do that by Wednesday, hopefully about Wednesday at noon or so, because we're already in the process of developing the agenda, and we're sitting in the back and forth and looking at it. And then, the next day on Thursday, those are put out. Now, for anyone who doesn't need that, if they have something that they would like to share with the board, or they want to let us know about, you can always come and sign in a board meeting. And that's what that paper sheet over there is. Anyone can come just prior to the meeting and sign in and decide their, whatever it is they want to talk about. Usually, they ask, you know, give your phone number, the rest, baby, and your name. And then, you may address the board. And we'll certainly listen and be cognizant of what you talk about, and oftentimes over the things that we make at a later time, discuss with Mr. Wilk or Mr. McKit, or whoever might be involved. But we really can't get in a discussion with you, so you can't ask us questions, because, you know, once again, you're not on our agenda. The idea behind that is, is everybody has a right to know what happens at a meet, a public meeting. And should someone come in and have strong feelings about a topic, there oftentimes are people who have strong feelings the other way. So if someone comes in and addresses us, and we're talking about it, and we're, you know, listening to them, and they have good arguments, everything sounds just great, well, sometimes there are people that have another view that we haven't heard then. So that's the whole idea, that any topic is going to be discussed, that everyone knows it in advance, it's going to be discussed, that's the key word. And everybody has a chance to come and air their view, one way or the other. But if you want to just come in and address the board, you can sign that in, or sign on that sheet for the board meeting, say whatever's on your mind. And I certainly let you know that we will be here, listening to it very carefully. We just won't be able to have a dialogue with you. Okay, thank you. The first presentation I'd want, or agenda tonight, is the Assessment Accountability Update. The Jonah Atkins, the technology director, is going to do that. Mr. McKit, any comments?
I just want to say that the embargo was lifted last week on our results, as well as accountability piece. Jonah's presentation tonight is just a brief presentation. He's just going to touch on the surface. What I would truly like to be able to do with the board is have a work session, where we can really dive into the data and results that we have. And we don't have to look at dates tonight, but maybe next Tuesday's meeting, if we could have a discussion about looking at some dates in October, once, because we're still trying to wrap our heads around these test results. And we have a much better view of the results.
Jonah, are you going to be, including the fact that this is new, this particular best, and all that type thing in the presentation?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, all right. Okay. Mr. Atkins?
Good evening, board. I will make note that Mr. McKit emphasized that I would have a brief presentation. He's noted that a few times over the past few days, the word "brief" keeps coming up, so I will do my best to keep it brief.
And that would perform with you, if there's no extra?
That's right. So it's going to be even briefer, if that's a word.
Maybe briefer than that?
Yeah.
No, no, no. He needs his slides to keep him on point, otherwise, we'll be here for a week.
Why, why I'm working on technology piece, Jonah's going to cover the test results for each one of the schools in his presentation. And I'm asking principals and their LSIC presentations not to address the data. There's no point here to say the information twice tonight. So we want to focus on what's being done, and what's being presented.
Although, we're going to possibly, when you do have your LSIC presentation, if there are things that come up for Mr. Atkins' presentation, you may ask him some questions about that, or something. You may cover many of those things. Something else come up, we may ask him something.
Our, Mr. Wilk, getting that up. I'll begin talking. Our first slide deals with our English Language Arts data. And English Language Arts scores historically have always been higher than our math scores, and that was true again for this year, with the exception. Had a little bit of a dip, a couple of grades. You can't see the percentages on there, neither can I, unless I have a slide to look at, because mine is just on the left. We have a, so it's like, this is going to be able to present, yeah, I have a 20, or something like that. All right. All right, okay, we're up and running. So with 36% in third grade, 32% in fourth grade, 34% in grade five, 37% in grade six, 38% in grade seven, and then back down to 34% in grade eight, which is, you know, we'd like to see the increase going upward in years. Dropped off a couple of points here and there, but as Mr. Greasley has already alluded to, this test can't be compared to last year's test because of the scaling. Previous year's tests were computer adaptive tests, in which the students, as they tested, if they missed certain items, the computer would adapt to where they were. This year was a fixed form test, where every student got the same question. So it's a little, kind of a little different scenario this year than it has been in the past. Mathematics, and I will preface this with by saying, when you'll see these scores, this is a statewide issue. The state is aware of that. The State Department has even launched a Math for Life campaign, which all counties are participating in. Be more information coming out about that in the future. But our math scores, it's something that we've seen a struggle with over the last several years. 37% in grade three, all the way down to 18% in grade eight.
But that's a state level, I mean, the proficiency rate is 37% in math for the entire state?
Right.
And 45% read like a dog.
Correct. And, you know, we're a couple of points below the state average overall, but we're right in the ballpark with everyone else. Again, you know, the, looking at the math data, it's a statewide issue. Elementary ELA, school comparisons, as you see, each block of columns represents a school, and the yellow is third grade, green is fourth grade, and the blue is fifth grade. Over at Duval, we had a 23, 40, and 14, going from grades three to five. At Hamlin, we had a 47, 39, and 34. At Hearts, we had a 50, 18, and 42. Midway, 28, 29, and 57, fifth grade, which was our highest ELA score elementary class across the county. Ranger, we had a 40, and 29, and 40. At West Hamlin, we had a 34, 33, and 26. Again, that's going, going from grades three through five, left to right. Questions?
Are the grades that were tested different as given to the same grade?
No, same grades. The only, the only spot that that changed was at the high school level. I'll get into that here in just a moment. Middle School ELA, same thing. There are four middle schools represented here. The green columns being sixth grade, red columns being our seventh grades, and blue being our eighth grades. At Duval, we had 38, 43, and 30. God Valley, 42, 34, and 38. Hamlin, 36, 40, and 45. And Hearts, at 26, 29, and 13. Again, that's grade six, seven. They respect for each school. At our math, elementary levels, same setup, grades three to five, going left to right. As you can see, those scores are significantly lower. Our ELA scores, Duval, 21, 26, 31. Hamlin, a 45, 25, 20. Hearts, it's 42, 33, 82. Hearts, fifth grade, was their highest math score elementary class across the county. Midway was 47, 39, 37. Ranger is 46, and 30. West Hamlin was 32, 33, 21. And again, this is proficiency grade level, or proficiency by grade level in mathematics at the elementary level. Stop me if you have any questions. Middle School math, I would really like to be able to show trend, but the state didn't recommend against looking at trends, even though they have a couple of things out there that show some data trends. But the tests have changed. Seemingly, we can't keep the same thing consistent for more than a year or two at a time, and so it's really hard to establish trends. But if you, if you look, there has been, one thing you need to understand, if you look at students, don't look at, don't look at grade levels, but look at students as they progress, grades three to four to five to six, we are seeing some increases that our students are making gains each year, which is something very positive to note. Our middle school math, Duval, 32, 27, and 21. God Valley is 9, 22, 15. Hamlin, 25, 29, and 25. And Hearts, 18, 19, and 3. Questions on middle school math? Can Mr. McKit go ahead and answer? Lincoln County High School, our juniors were the only set of students that were tested, and that was with the SAT School Day. That was one change that was made, as I mentioned. Times past, they had, we tested all grades three through 11. A couple of years ago, they did away with ninth and 10th grade as far as English Language Arts and Math. 10th grade did, however, take science 2016, '17, in school year. But this year, only the 11th grade tested the SAT School Day, whereas grades three through eight take the West Virginia General Summit assessment. So our English Language Arts proficiency at Lincoln County High School is 50, 51%, round that up, and math is 38%.
So grades nine, 10, and 12 take no test?
Yeah.
So how do those numbers compare statewide, the 50.9 and 37.6?
Right, it's, it's right at state average. If you look at, I'll talk about that here in just a moment, a little more when I get over to the balance scorecard results. Lincoln County High School is faring pretty well, as far as we look at across the state of the high schools. Questions? Okay, this is our balance scorecard, which is a new report that was released this year. This is public knowledge. You can access it on the State Department website. Bring this data up for yourself. Mr. McKit, I believe, can you make some comments?
Well, I just want to say that this, now, this is the accountability data we're preparing to look at.
Yes.
Accountability piece is entirely different with the trade-off results that gets at on the assessment. You don't have to have a master program in mathematics to understand the calculations themselves. The methodology that's involved, exactly, is found on the website. You can look at it and see how they come up with the calculations. But instead, it'll be on a 100-point scale for proficiency, it's a 125-point scale. So excuse the percentages we look at. You're not really comparing averages.
On the accountability standard, so we're getting ready to look at.
Right. And that's why I'd like to be able to have a work session, so we can dig into that.
Because accountability data was based on cut scores that were set by teachers that the State Department brought in back in the summer. I participated in that as well. Teachers, principals, directors, various folks there, setting accountability cut scores, which are completely different than proficiency cut scores. Sometimes I get confused with all those, it really is. So our total enrollment for this year, past fiscal year, was 3,462 students. For the full academic year, that is students, can you get them out?
135 days transit, or in our district, it's 135 days.
Any students below that are not considered full academic year students, and they are not factored in to our accountability. It's for our test. So our attendance rate last year overall was 89.93, 90%, which is a pretty, pretty good number overall. Something positive to note, our graduation rate for a four-year cohort was 93%, which is very high. Average is one of our blue areas, I do believe, if I recall correctly. You'll see that here in just a moment for Lincoln County High School.
Goals would be at 90% by 2013.
Right. 93, it's not 2.8, I'll round up. Our five-year cohort graduation rate is 87%. A little lower, but expect that to come up next couple of years. This, next information there, per pupil expenditures, federal money is $1,242.06. Our state and local share money is, per pupil is $6,487.41. Per pupil district level expenditures per student, federal money is $419. State local share money, per pupil district level expenditures, $3,561.92. And our total per pupil expenditures are $11,710.61. And this is what you will see on the balance scorecard site, and again, we'll get to the State Department website. One important piece, you want to go look at that, you need to use Google Chrome or Mozilla Firefox. You will not be able to access it in Internet Explorer.
And this scorecard takes the place of the GAF grading system that we saw a couple of years ago. This is brand new, seeing it for the first time.
So green, color-wise, green is exceed standard, blue is meet standard, yellow is partially meet standard, red does not meet standard. And then, the gray area below cell size, we do not have a cell for the English Language learners. I think there are two, three students in the county that are yellow students. The specific data, and I didn't download that for, just for terms of time, but you can actually access that data. If you, if you go there, if you click on Download Dataset, that will give you an accountability percentage breakdown for each school.
Where do you think you go there?
To go to the West Virginia Department of Education website. On the front page, you'll see a scrolling banner, and it says Balance Scorecard, Find My School. You can click on that, hit that link, and it will take you to page, select your district. Once you select your district, you will see this, this information here. So as I mentioned while I go, the four-year graduation rate cohort was very high area for Lincoln County. One of the positives to note.
Across the top of it, like, green is exceed standards.
Yep.
Blue is meets.
Yellow is partially meets. Red is does not meet.
And that's based on a 125-point scale, and how they calculated those percentages.
Correct. And I'm not going to read, read all that to you. I'll let you insert that. If you have any questions.
And one piece that's really confusing is the attendance piece. As you look down through there, you'll see it's red, where we are not meeting the attendance piece. And what it is, is the federal requirements say that you have to have 90% of your students present 90% of the time, which really isn't how our code is set up in our state, because we make allowances for certain types of absences. So the way, the way that West Virginia computes the percentage of students who are in attendance is just kind of straight up, or not, I'm just trying to think of the way the federal government wants you to look at how attendance percentages is straight up. Either the kid's present or he's not. So their calculation management is different than the state's. We have to follow the feds guidelines, and we're not meeting that. And there are very few, maybe a handful of schools in the entire state
Yeah.
that is not being rated in that category.
Those were the federal government's stats that project where you should be.
Basically, they say no excuses. West Virginia allows excused absences. The feds do not essentially.
Now, you say they don't allow excused absences, or are they in that 10% category?
Well, I don't, I don't know that. I don't think they acknowledge any type of excuse.
It does, it's 90%, is that what?
Not, not necessarily. Kids must be present 90% of the time.
So that means 10% of the kids can be absent.
Yes.
So some of those could be excused absences.
Could be, West Virginia.
Right.
I mean, it may not be. So that's the website. I'll look that up every time. If you click on the slide there, it'll play the thing, what, how they come up with this project.
If you go back to the, Mr. Jordan, can I call him on this?
Yeah.
Might be easier.
Can you first pull up that slide?
Yeah, that's one of the ones I had.
There is a, it says methodology. And it's a 20-page document that explains how they come up with all. I have it here.
Boy, it really is.
Because there, let's give you the, overall plan. And where it says methodology, that's, that is the document that shows and describes how
Yeah.
all the calculations.
I would say, but I didn't click on that.
Yeah. But the one about attendance has got, you know, people are questioning that. It's like, how could you be, have nine, rating nine, what do you want for us, for seeing attendance, but then, big does not meet's over there in that category? Because the feds looks at the attendance difference.
Do we know yet, or are we going here with the same method, this four-year of the same method?
It's the benchmark piece, some of it's changing. Some of this will look different. Just to, to give you a little bit of insight on what I know as far as testing this year, our schools are currently taking what's called a classroom benchmark assessment. And to simplify it, it's kind of like a fall general sum of assessment. It's to get our benchmark. And then, we, once we take the general sum of assessment in the spring, we'll be able to look and compare those two sets of data, to see how much our students have grown through the year.
Like when I was here, about, to be able to track the third grade student next year, see if he went up for math.
That's, that's the goal. There are also, besides the classroom benchmark assessment, I don't want to give you a pack for him overload, but there are interim bench, or diagnostic assessments, there are comprehensive interim assessments that, that schools and teachers can give throughout the years to kind of progress monitor. You know, if the results of this fall classroom benchmark assessment aren't kosher, and we want to take that data and attack that data throughout the year, you can administer the diagnostic and the comprehensive assessments to see, see how we're doing throughout.
We have some tools that we haven't had tonight.
Yes, correct.
To help teachers.
That will help tremendously.
Well, you believe they're going to change that, or that's that they usually change?
Test will be the same.
Do I put this scorecard back up there?
Yes.
The behavior piece, the far right-hand?
No.
Based upon the percentage of students who were not suspended from school.
Correct.
They're not, they're not suspended from school.
And that, and that was for Level 1 and Level 2 offenses, correct?
Right.
Level 3, Level 4, which gets into your more dangerous safe schools violations types offenses.
That was not failed, as an example, but we didn't count, and that percentage.
Also, behavior, when it comes down to our, to our school designations, behavior is not a factor in that. That was one thing that was not factored in, the designated schools.
And we can take a deeper dive into the English Language Arts and Math. The benchmark indicator, that was supposed to show growth this year, that's not what happened. It ended up being another sum of the assessment at the end of the year. So actually, it took two sums of the assessments
Back to back.
Back to back to finish out the school. So, Mr. Curry, that's what we'll do for next year.
That will be how we do it for the one that does math.
This, this piece here, this year is being taken right now. Benchmark is being taken right now. Last year, it was taken in March, greatly. And then, we turned around in May and took the sum of the assessment. So I imagine we'll see a lot more greens and blues here next year.
First thing we said, when we saw the red, because, you know, we've got a lot of those not meets there, we were wondering, how red are we? That was a question that came up when we had our green ones in the meeting. But you can actually dive into this a little deeper. You can see that Ranger Elementary, West Hamlin Elementary, Duval, just missed being partially meet standard in English Language Arts. They were just a percentage point or two away, where they would have also been yellowed, orange, whatever that color.
And had the benchmark taken place last fall, I still have a feeling that we would have seen a much different look.
And the check mark indicates that we're making progress. That, you see a check mark up there at Midway in mathematics, Ranger mathematics, that means there was increases that are in line with what the state is targeting, is what we need to be able to do by the time we get to the year 2013, to get halfway to that 100% goal of having our kids be proficient across the board. So if you notice that there's a lot So, did you notice that there's a lot more to this, that's like I said, if I could have a couple hours of conversation, I'd really get into it, and look at the not, not that we can be efficient. Now, Title One schools, Title One schools that are red this year, that include math as well as reading, language arts, so that's Ranger, West Hamer, Duvall, and Hards, have been identified as comprehensive support and improvement schools. So, those Title One schools will now be in line for some federal dollars, it sounds like it may be a significant amount of money, over the next three years, to, to do some good work, to make improvements in terms of being able to raise the achievement in both language arts and math. We have a meeting Thursday with the department, and we'll, we'll know more information, and hopefully I can even share that with you next Tuesday, before we, before we come down.
Did you say the Title One schools are there? Do any of these results cause one to be a Title One school, it's the same criteria as if they're Title Ones, really different?
They were already Title One schools, because we identified them previously.
Right, but this has nothing to do with, this, now you.
And there are, there are going to be schools that are not Title One, that will be identified in a later round for targeted support.
Right, so there'll be, hopefully some type of funding support for them?
Not understanding there will not be.
There will not be any, they'll just have a label with no money.
But if you're Title One, you can see that you get some money to help you, but if you aren't, you're done.
Right. Initially, what I was told, this was through a phone conference last week, those four schools are allowed to receive as much as a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for the next three years, plus the district will receive money for district-wide activities. But all those specifications and guidelines are, are going to be sent out to us Thursday.
All four of them are Title One schools. And you'd add money for teacher, or anything you want?
We don't know yet.
Oh.
That's what, what the meeting's about. I hope you're able to have some more information too, next Tuesday. Any further questions? All right.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
We just keep trying to keep up with, they change, and where are we?
I asked a question the other day, I said, what happened in the days when we started these, you know, slider, things made a lot more sense than what you had.
What you go with, like, actually, yeah, with math. Okay. Thanks, Mr. Roy, we appreciate your help, we'll talk about that Tuesday, sounds like we're going to have work sessions. Okay, our, next on our agenda is our first LSIC meeting, local school improvement council. Most of us have learned by now, that's something that's required by law, been in effect for several years now, where each school and county, they meet with the Board of Education, and present, make one presentation, such as one here tonight, and they will cover things at the school level, but they have school independence, members deserve LSIC at each school, and those members oftentimes come up with things that they would like to discuss, and then they share those with the principal, then come to the board meeting, discuss those things. And oftentimes, those generate places from us, and other things too. So, John Lane Davis, this is Davis from Guyanese Middle School, is first. Ms. Davis? Is he bothering you?
No, he was helping.
Mr. Roy, we appreciate you for it, and enjoy.
Thank you.
I just, I want to make a little comment. I was briefly out.
Thank you.
I don't, I try to make it a little bit brighter than data, but this year, we know that we're faced with some challenges at our school, but we know that we can't just dwell on the negative, so we are going to focus on the positive. We have a, part of our issue with dealing with how we're going to improve test scores and stuff, is dealing with our special education population. And currently, we have two hundred and seventy-eight students, and eighty-eight students are on IEP, we are at thirty-two percent special ed. So, we know that we have some challenges with that, and with that, thinking my leadership team and the rest of our staff have come up with ways to address those. So, we are going to continue working with our PLCs, we're going to have our math, English, actually, all content areas collaboratively examine curriculum and planning together, are there certain topics that they can cover across content areas, can we vertically align some things within our building? We are going to use our learning skills classes to address areas that we know are math and reading. We're also going to use our multi-tier, which is a layer to our multi-tier systems of support, as well as utilizing our Title One, she is going to do a system forty-four lab this year. We're also going to continue our Read 180 with Ms. Obviously, and identifying what students need to be in there versus the students don't need to be, and utilizing two part-time interventionists once, hopefully, we get them hired to cover math intervention. Our Title One and our interventionists are also, want to focus on pulling kids during that learning skills class, we have those aligned at each grade level, happens at the same time. So, sixth grade, all sixth grade learning skills are together, so those teachers can trade kids if they need to, they can put groups together and co-teach if, if necessary, and focus on especially these classroom benchmark assessments, we get that data back and identify what are strengths and weaknesses for our kids, and what, what can we, what do we need to really focus them on. And like I said, these Title One, our interventionists will be pulling at the same time, so instead of just having maybe four or five teachers, we're going to have like eight, four kids to do different, small group, really hone in on those skills that need to be taught. Continue our sister, our referral system for SAT and other supportive services, and we're definitely going to keep using those interns and classroom benchmarks to help us make data-driven decisions for instruction. Student engagement, leader in me is big in our school, it's getting bigger, we have more buy-in this year, the kids that come from our, our feeder schools, they know about it, they're, they want to do jobs, they want to help lead things around the school, and our goal this year is to get more students leading more events, and taking charge of those things. So, incorporating our student council, My House, to make school decisions that, things that kids want to have happen, or that kids would want to do in the school. One of the things that the kids talked about last year was starting a pet club, so Ms. Ross is taking the charge with getting that started in our school, we have a section at our football games, one of the section at our basketball games, where those students will sit and be able to cheer on our school. We're also going to incorporate our leadership portfolios, which is really a way for kids to set goals, do some self-reflection, take, really take ownership in their learning, and look at their own data. Our test talks are also part of that. Myself, my new students last year, my counselor week, and my Title One teacher, Ms. Ferguson, we test talked every student last year before they took the state exam, and those conversations were really valuable, and a great opportunity to just to connect with kids, and get a feel for, you know, what the kids, how they see themselves, and where they see their, where they're going to go, where they're going to be, and we're going to continue doing those things. We're also going to continue our leader of the month, and our cop doing good, and those students that are caught doing good around the school, because they should always be good, get a special ticket that their friends and themselves get to go to the front of the lunch line. We changed up the way we start the day, we started, everybody in the cafeteria gets breakfast, and we do a morning meeting, which we do all of our announcements together, it's a little cramped, but it works. I think that works much better than us just doing announcements over the intercom, because I get to see all the kids when we talk to them in the morning, especially if those things that we more specifically would like to address. We've also changed our responsible students program from cats and kids earning tickets, or cat bucks. We chose, we have traded in for pride, which are our Wildcats every morning, Wildcats are prepared, Wildcats are respectful, Wildcats are independent, Wildcats are dedicated, Wildcats are engaged, you can't hide that Wildcat pride. Kids, if they're not demonstrating these things within the classroom, they earn demerits, and then, the teachers, once they get a third demerit, the teacher that's issuing that sends a letter home, just to let the parents know, hey, some things might not be in check with your kid, we need to get him back on track. And we have some activities planned for those kids to earn no demerits, or three or less demerits at specific times during the school year. And the kids enjoy doing our chant, and they've made posters, and the cheerleaders actually leave this year every morning, so it's really great to have those kids stand up and lead those things. Attendance, we knew was a big problem, so we are creating an attendance team to tackle attendance issues at our school. Really, it's making parent contact, having conferences with those parents, meeting with those kindly absent students, my counselor has found some curriculum that she can use, and work with those students one-on-one, some lessons that she can work with them, hopefully to help make that connection, like, I need to be at school, or why am I not at school? Because I think that's a big question, too, we have to ask the kids, is why are you not here? You know, and, and, and kids can answer that, especially at the middle school level, so we, this is our first step in tackling that attendance, because if they're not there, they're not learning. Facilities, I really, I'm not going to complain about a ninety-one-year-old building, it is what it is, and we are going to do the best we can. So, one thing that I do have to give some shout-outs to Armstrong, they came in and painted our library. My daughter is going to clean the carpets this summer, bless her heart, and we cleaned, we scrubbed, we're also in the process of setting up some reading notes, so the teachers could bring in kids, and what we do is the same style of reading during their next time, you know, just to get cozy and get into that flow of reading. Kids, the one way they're going to get better at reading is practice, but you can't get there if you don't ever get into the flow. That flow is so critical for them to fall in love with reading, so that they want to continue that practice, so. We painted our hallways white with a nice dress blues trim, so now everything pops, our bulletin boards, our signs aren't blended in, you can really see some things, Lincoln County Day Report, adults on probation came, and they painted our building, and I do have to share, that was so great for that to happen. They really, you know, just painting with those guys, cleaning with those guys, you know, just getting this stuff, they're like, they would tell me, you know, Mrs. Davis, I know I have to do community service, because I did something wrong, and I have a penalty to pay, yes, but I can go pick up trash, and that's community service. But when I come and I help you in your building, I know I'm truly giving back, because I'm giving back to the kids. We have a school store, I had them paint it, because it was just ugly. And one of the young ladies said, you know, what is this? And I said, well, it's a school store, the kids earn tickets, and they can come in and purchase things with tickets. And I said, I know we've got to change that up this year, but, she's like, this is awesome. Had we had this in my school, maybe I wouldn't have dropped out. So, I found that by working with them and talking with them, maybe there are some things that I could take away, that I could put in place, and one little thing that's positive, that's different, or listening to one student voice might make a difference in whether that child, you know, continues to stay in school, stay on that right path. And so, that's, was very meaningful for us, and I hope that we can continue that working relationship, that they can come in and help us. We created a new conference room, on the front, we actually have a TV that's touchscreen, and two wa, black magnetic glass boards, teachers can bring their kids in, and kids can give presentations like they would if they were in a college setting, or a formal setting. And we, we wanted to showcase, right now, we have it set up for testing, so that's why I don't have the front, but that's our conference room. So, we're really looking forward to doing these things for the kids, with the kids, and making a difference, and in the end, you know, our, we'll, we'll drive up those test scores at some point, but it's going to take, keep it on track, we'll do positive things with them.
Okay, I have one question.
Okay.
I think you said you had thirty-three percent of your students on IEP, have you got any records of what it was last year, or year before, is it still going up?
It's still going up. Last year, we were, we had two hundred and eighty-three kids, and seventy-eight were on IEP. So, we increased four percent this year.
But in that case, in all their schools, we have, and we all know what that is.
Yeah, I feel like we have a very unique population in our building.
How about Alex?
I, I remember when I was the literacy coach, and we were sick, and we were at that test with thirty percent, and we really worked, we really worked hard, and that first year we were sick, we jumped up in English twelve percent, and math at thirteen percent, so it can be done, it's a lot of, you know, you're, you're working your guts out, but to get the kids to think about their learning, and self-reflection, and what their goals are, and what their, them understanding what their data means, the kids really buy into that, and they want to.
Do you mind answering, or are there any questions?
I just have one. Do you know, the faculty knows, the legislature modified the school aid calendar last year, at least some things could be done with the school aid calendar. One of those things that Mr. Minkiv encouraged us to do, was to provide four PL days, professional learning days, in lieu of the hundred days, and so, you know, students, by law, excuse me, attend the school a hundred and eighty days, but the legislature said that, well, they can actually attend less than that, under certain circumstances. And one of those options was that counties could use a certain number of days for professional learning, when students would actually not be there, but things could be done by staff that positively affects students. So, we have chosen to do that, Mr. Minkiv laid out some, what I thought were excellent points, you know, we don't have any more early outs, you know, because we know what that does to attendance, and a lot of things. So, he convinced us that really, the amount of time we spend on early outs, and some of the other activities that were like that, faculty said, getting out early, and this, that, and the other, that it really equated to about the same amount of time, about four days waiting for, but it was all confined. So, we're hopeful, and I hope you all are too, that those four days can be designated for some of the real serious things that you want to do at your school, and we're going to look at that in force and see how that works out each year. But we're hoping that you see it as we do, your faculty does, as an opportunity, because when you have a whole day, you can plan down the road, and, you know, it's not something you want to have to do, well, next week, we have a, we're going to have a faculty senate meeting, what are we going to do in those two hours, everybody on bus duty, and this, that, and the other. But you know that the entire day, so you might schedule a speaker two or three months ahead of time to come in and address your staff, so we hope that that's something that's beneficial, and we, we'll be looking for feedback towards the end of this school year, if that's something we want to continue in the future.
Well, I, I know that, just talking with my leadership team, we're, we're grateful for that, because that's what we keep saying, we need time, and we don't have time. You know, it, with the, the number, the high number of special ed students that we have, I couldn't make PLCs happen. because that's what we keep saying, we need time, and we don't have time. You know, with the number, the high number of special ed students that we have, I couldn't make PLCs happen during the day. I just can't. We, they can tell you, we've worked tirelessly all summer to try to make that happen, and we're still back to mornings and rotating different PLCs. So having a day like that, where we know we can plan ahead, and if there's staff development that anybody on staff could deliver, such as when we first came back, I let Michelle Ross do a piece on differentiated instruction, just to bring it back to focus, that we really need to differentiate for these kids, and different easy ways that you can quickly implement it into the classroom, so that it's always on our mind that, you know, when you have eighty-eight students, and you look at your classroom, you might have thirty percent. That's thirty percent that's got to have it a little bit different. You know, they're got a little bit of a, and that can affect everybody, too. That can make a difference for other kids.
And you can have a variety of activities occurring on that day.
Absolutely.
Right?
Absolutely, yes.
All right.
So we're grateful for that.
We'll be talking to you in springtime, but we'll see what we want to do. Okay. If no one has anything else, we appreciate you coming in and talking to us today, Ms. Davis, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to let her catch her breath and get her things. In the meantime, from Ranger Elementary, we're seeing a mountain. I'm sure it's been, I think there she is.
I would be here.
She was behind.
I'm going to worry. I thought you were on paper. So I'm not going to worry about it.
She did, too. It was just a different contract.
Now, this is a short version, I love. Yeah. I...
Will you just take your time?
I have the long version. I'm excited, but I'm also, Bill called me the other morning, about six-thirty, fifteen or seven, and I, he was explaining to me that we were going to be a comprehensive school. I take things so personal that I got real tore up, and I started crying on it. And he said, now, look, it's the beginning of the morning, you can't go out there and face those kids like that. You just collect yourself, and let's do this. So not only does that title truly affect me, more importantly, my children are the ones that I worry more about than anything. However, piggybacking on that, there's lots of positive things going on that are behind the scenes, that that test and that title don't show, and don't have the ability to see, or the people that are making those decisions have the ability to see and understand on a day-to-day basis that we do. We've got lots of things, and I had, last year, when you were at our presentation, we were tracking every child, and we've started now doing it in second grade. We still track our first kindergarten and first grade with their DIBELS and their assessments, but we are tracking with our reading inventories, our math inventories, our daily attendance, our comprehensive, our, I've got not tore up, but our benchmarks, things, all of those assessments, we are tracking from day one in school, when we start doing those, and every nine weeks, we are continuing that. We're looking at the growth those children are making. Our kids had lots of positive growth last year in their Lexile levels and their quantiscore, quanti scores in math. We know that, because we did all of math. We still have lots of children that have lots of challenges. We have lots of children that have, that are in the red, but we have quite a few children that are in the green and the blue. We have to build on those children that are in the red and the yellow, we've got to target those skills, and that's what we are doing this year with our title, one person, Ms. Frye, our interventionist, we're using our counselor, we're using anybody that is available. They are being used to help build those skills that those children are weak in or deficient in, to get them where they need to be, in math and in reading. We are extending our math times, so that there is more math being taught, more hands-on math being taught. We're taking math into science in our fourth and fifth grade as well. We're integrating that a lot, so that our children not only are learning the concept, they're putting it to use, and that's what, they're using it in their everyday life. And that's what we need, for our children to see the benefits of learning, so that they can continue and want to be there and want to do it. One of our biggest challenges, attendance. Ms. Frye is our attendance mentor. She and I have already made home visits this year. We make phone calls at six-thirty and seven o'clock. First bus rolls in, they're not on it, they've got a phone, they get a phone call. You know, some of those children are getting themselves up, and you guys know this, they're putting themselves on the bus. So if necessary, we've even went and picked them up, because that is the success that we're going to see. If we get them there, we know that success is possible. Looking at some of the things that we have going on, we have targeted with our Wilson's program, we are continuing to use our grants with the vegetable gardens, had huge success with that this year with our science, and going out, we've got pumpkins growing in the front lawn right now. We had lots of tomatoes and different things this summer. We're using the System Forty-four, the Read One-eighty. Jennifer Ashlock, we had several teachers that are, that were trained this summer, the week-long training, they're putting those strategies into place in that kindergarten first and second grade. So we're using all the things that we've been taught, and we're really focusing on leader in me. If we can get our children to take ownership of their behaviors and their attitudes, our job's going to be so much easier in teaching them the skills and teaching them what they need to do to be successful. That's one of our biggest challenges, but you know what? We're up for it. As a school, as a community, as a county, that's what, we've got to be up for that, we've got to be pushing, and most importantly, you've got to have that empathy to say, I know the situation, you've got somebody you can come to, you can talk to me, any staff member at our school, we're going to help you, whether you need clothes, you need shoes, whatever it is, we're going to take care of that. Once you get the trust, those children can trust you, and know that you're there as a friend, as well as an educator, we're going to see more success. You guys know what the Ranger community is like. I mean, I live there now, I know, I see it. That's a challenge our kids are going to have to overcome, and the only way they're going to do that is through the school system. That's probably the biggest positive they have in their life. And I'm not preaching to the choir, I'm just, we have a lot of success going on. That demonstration was a moment in time, and I had to come to that resolution myself. That was a moment in time. Got a lot of things going on, got a great little school, we're there to protect them, we're there to educate them, we're there to take care of their needs, whatever they may be. And that's, that's what Ranger's about. If you get nothing else from what I said, that's what we're about, taking care of those children, meeting their needs, educating them, but more importantly, instilling a love for learning, so that they can overcome the obstacles that they are facing on a daily basis. There is a few other things, I mean, we've got crisis, we meet, we've got lots of teams going on, we've got our leadership teams, we've got, the leader in me is going to be, we're going to focus a lot more on that this year, we're going to bring that out more within our children. We started it last year, we saw some success, but this year, that's going to be a big part of our curriculum. Because if we teach that within our classrooms, within our school, as a school-wide project, we're going to see success. Our children, more importantly, are going to see success. We saw lots of positives with our SRI and SMI last year, or EMI and RI, and we're going to continue that this year. Just got an email from Kim, the licenses were purchased, and we are going to continue. I know that's not something that every school in the county's going to do, but we have put lots of time and effort into the data that we collect from that, and we have saw the success with our kids, and that was something that our staff felt we wanted to continue. So that was something that Jonah and Kim and Perk and quite a few other people pulled some funding and were able to make happen. I probably didn't cover topics that you thought I should, but if you've got questions, please ask me.
I do.
Ask me.
I can remember looking at the data two or three years ago, and it's not fair to ask you this, because there isn't an answer. I know that going in, but this is the question that's bouncing around in my mind. Two, three years ago, I remember looking at the data, and Ranger was here. I mean, there were another school or two that were close, but for a couple of years, we were heads and shoulders. And now I look at the data, and it's not been as small, it's been a precipitous decline.
It has.
What's happened? I mean, how does that happen in a two, three-year period?
Look at the change from when the mine was at Wayne County, very close, lots of families that were there, those families have moved away, lots of families that don't have jobs now, and those families had other activities that their resources are going toward, that have created, and I'm just, just from things that I've saw personally, drugs have played a major role, and the priority of parents is not for education anymore, it's self-soothing, whatever it is that they need for themselves, and the children are not getting the support they need at home. We've got grandmothers and grandfathers. In the past few years, we've had sixty- and seventy-year-old grandparents taking care of kids five and six years old. That is a challenge in itself. I mean, I can't take care of a five or six-year-old, not only physically, they run me to death. But, you know, that's, those are some of the things that are, and I'm not trying to cop out on giving you an answer, but those are some of the things that I see that are the challenges that have caused some of the decline. I'm sure there's a lot more, but those are some of the things that are very...
Well, you're the person on the ground, you're the one that has the birdside view of the dangers.
And I mean, there's probably not a home that I haven't been to or drove by of any child in my building. I mean, I'm out and about, see, you see things, so it's not that, things, you try, parents try to cover things up, but in reality, it's not possible. So...
If I can add something, Rudy. I looked at this data, and one thing that jumped out at me, if you remember when you looked at the balance scorecard, it had that grade wasn't enough, and that cell size to count. Well, this test was given to third, fourth, and fifth graders, and how many third and fourth, fourth, fifth graders did you have last year? Probably forty-five, fifty?
Third grade, I had, yeah, fifty-eight, I think. I think there was fifty-eight.
You have to have twenty to have a subgroup to be counted. There was twenty, over twenty homeless kids. Ranger had a subgroup in homeless within those three grades, of homeless students.
And this year, I have thirty-eight, thirty-eight children out of a hundred and three that are homeless.
In your home, it's what, ninety-five, ninety-six?
It's a hundred and three.
Is it up to a hundred and three?
Yeah, it's a hundred and three.
What do you mean by homeless?
Means that they are either doubled up in a home with two or three families living together, or parents and grandparents living together with children, or they are in transition homes. Yeah, so, you know, it's, that has greatly increased over, you know, foster, yeah.
A lot of them don't know what they're laying their head each time.
That's it. And I had, last week, we had a situation, and if I could have taken the kids home with me, I would have taken them. And it was, it was heart-wrenching, because two little boys that were brothers were in two different foster homes, and they had been in, within a two-week period, they'd been in three homes. Now, how does a child five, four, and five years old adjust to being in three different homes in two-week period? It's unreal. I don't have any answers, I just know that we are committed to doing everything that we can do and know to do to make life better for the kids, and to make the education of meeting their needs a priority.
I could have phrased the question a little differently, that would probably made it easier for you to answer. My question more came from, are the things that you need that you're not getting? I mean, understanding that dollars are always limited, but my question was more, you know, are the things lacking that would have made a difference? People, programs, funding?
I don't foresee programs being a big, I don't think that's the answer. Now, people, I can't say if I'd have had three or four more people, that things would have been any better. That's, you know, I'm sure it would have helped if there was another teacher or two, or another interventionist or whatever, because more people with more skills teaching more small groups has to help, but to say that it's going to make the jump from one to the other, I...
Yeah, I hear you, Jack. Sitting here real quietly, and it's getting very difficult. The other variable that we have addressed this, is dealing with traumatized children. Now, we know they're out there. Unfortunately, our teachers have not been trained appropriately, we're doing the best we can right now to train them, and we're met, and you have put things in place to address that. The one thing that we need, in my opinion, and I don't want to take everybody's, but we don't need money, we don't need programs, we need time to get these things into place so we can figure out how to address this kid that's coming to us, that the parents are on this, and how we can teach that child to be self-reliant and self-resilient. And that's where we are in our trauma training right now. It's going to take us a little more time. We can't fix this overnight. Now, I know, when we look at these scores, and we look at the left side of this balance scorecard, it's hard to swallow. In my opinion, and I'm going to state it now, and have them helping, I think we need to be focusing on the right-hand side. We need to be focused on attendance and the behavior, because if those things are solid, these things are going to take care of themselves. I'm done.
Okay. Anybody have anything else to say?
I'd just like to comment. I mean, I understand what you're saying, all schools have issues like that, and I cannot see the test scores coming up, or the situation gets any better until we get the problem straightened. And I don't think that is...
We're working on Mr. Curry, that's all we can tell you. And we got, we got to rely on those professionals the best we can.
Yeah. And I understand, you know, we need more ages, we've got more problem children in school, but...
Yeah, they're coming in quickly.
Well, it's something we've discussed, there are, there doesn't exist, I'm aware of, yet a program or a set of learned treatises that guides you in how to teach and manage children that have the issues that we're seeing increasingly, increasing as our students.
You're absolutely correct, sir, there isn't one out there right now. And we know that, unfortunately, Lincoln County has been labeled as the highest opioid usage in our area. That's the other dirty laundry that we have to accept.
And our students, our students are more than test scores, and we talk about that all the time.
Absolutely.
That does not show the success of students or students.
That does not show the success of student work. And you cannot take it, you know, leave out the fact that we have a high percentage of students living in poverty. Our special education needs are just increasing, you know, every, seems like every day. But, but we do great work. I, I'm proud of the work of our teachers, our aides, our service employees, our administrators, because it, you have to work a lot harder to move the needle. And, and I think the efforts there, I've always felt that we do a great job in educating our kids.
That you see that, just that little bit of success. And you know what? It's worth every minute of those challenges you faced to get that. And we have a child that has absolutely amazed us everyone this year. Challenged out the roof last year. You would never know it's the same child this year. I mean, little bit of love, little bit of empathy for the situation, and just absolutely taking that child under your wings. Truly, I get chills because it's just, I, I cannot believe it myself. It, God truly blessed us this year with, with the, well, blessed that baby. In a, in a way that we could never do. But we have had, we have played a positive role in helping those things happen. And that's what, that's what it's all about. I mean, you see it. I mean, you see that, everything else, just, it's minute. You take what you get, those positives, and you, you run with them.
You, Rowdy touched upon it. And a couple of things have been said here, came out that I first thought. When I saw the test scores, I thought Ranger's was very, very high and now they're not. And I'm like Rowdy, you know, I'm thinking, scratching my head on what's happening. I think you alluded to many of the things. Another thing you said was attendance, and Mr. Kim said the same thing. You can't teach somebody that don't come to school. And that covers a lot of things. I, I'm not one that's very happy with the state legislature's changing of attendance laws for us. I think they've made it more lenient. I think you need to be at school, but there are reasons many of the kids aren't there. And I think we're all trying to address them being there. The other thing, it's more personal in a way, the other day, Mr. McKeever shared with me kind of the results of what had happened. My first question to him was, have you told Christine? And he goes, yes, we have. And I said, did she react the way I think she did? He goes, yes, she did.
It's heartbreaking.
So, we understand how much you care and all the work you do there and what it means to you, and how hard you're going to work and what you can't stand, you know, to make it to use. Rowdy said, we're looking to place, we can... Now, this is a side note here, and I'll be quiet. These professional learning days that we, I think we've been talking, the same thing with your staff, those days were there. Now, some of the things you mentioned, even what the trauma classes were, now, there are kinds, and they're set aside. You know when they are. So, and he may even be planning some county-wide activities related to some of those things too. But I think that's one positive thing that I've been sold on, because forever, teachers need time to collaborate. And the more, the merrier. And always, there's always been hindrance in that before. You get a faculty senate meeting, it had to be, it started at this time, or some of the people aren't in off-bus duty, they're coming in late, and nobody's really focused on what's there. But these days, folks, you come that day is on certain things. And so, we're hoping that that'll be successful. We'd like to draw feedback later in the year, and bonus note, that's going to be what we hope to be. We have a couple of... We understand how much you care, what goes on there at Ranger. We've seen it in action, been there. We haven't had to sing or anything tonight, but you know, we're, we're still there, we understand.
But the year's not over.
It should have.
Absolutely.
Mr. Roberson?
Yeah, I have a question, Christine. I sort of have some personal contact with this program. Backpack program, have you had any experience in being able to talk to some of the kids that are on the backpack program, are taking the food home? Is, is it really benefiting the child, or is, well, just to be blunt, are other people getting the food? In other words, are the child, is the child actually benefiting?
Yes. And we have some children that even ask. Eddie does those backpacks every week and passes those out. Children are eating that stuff, sometimes on the bus. You know, there's, and some of the stuff is really, really good stuff. I mean, the kids really like.
I helped with this program back then.
Yes. And there's some things that, you know how children are, but our kids definitely. And this summer, that program made a huge difference. I mean, I delivered, I would, they would bring it to the school and I would deliver it or call parents to come pick it up. There were lots of little kids. When I pulled into the driveway or the yard, they were running to the car because they knew that I was bringing those things to them. So, yeah, they're, it's, it's a very positive in our community and our school.
I'd like to see this expanded, because the things we pack, well, for Midway School, the things we pack doesn't seem to be, it doesn't take care of an entire week.
No, no, it does not. But at least we know they had something.
So, you do get some positive feedback from your students?
Yes, yes. Yes, we do.
Okay. Anyone else have anything else to say? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Appreciate your hard work. Thanks, Christine. Okay. Our final LSIC presentation for tonight is the host school, West Ham, and Mr. John Royce will talk to us about West Ham. He doesn't need Mr. Agan to come up and help him. He may, he may end up with a technology director.
Hey. I do have to have a PowerPoint to keep me going along, so I stay on fast. And I know that you guys have weathered the, the heat and some of the smell, so if you haven't died yet, I don't think, I don't think fifty more minutes are going to kill you in the presentation.
We're good.
Did he say fifty?
We won't be, I don't know, I'm not guaranteeing it won't happen tomorrow morning.
I do have a handout for you. A lot of this may look familiar, as I covered most of it last year in, in some form. It's just things that we kind of kept going because it's been beneficial to our students. And I'm going to just kind of jump into what Ms. Christine was talking about as far as students in need, traumatized children, Kenny Vento, homeless. We have, I looked, well, I was just the one down the list, and it is a situation, we have five hundred and twenty students in our building right now, give or take, and that changes every day. I think we enrolled three new foster kids or two today, and probably, I know two new foster students. So, it's a situation that we see and we battle against, and the, the hard part is, is the teachers being asked to do things that they've never done before. Not just teach ABCs and one, two, threes, but they're asked to do things that they've never done. Maybe spend time counseling a, a student, just talking to them in, in ways that might make them want to come back to school, tying into the attendance piece. You know, if kids, those are habits, and we're, we, oftentimes, we, we allude to the Leader in Me and all those seven habits. You know, attendance is a habit, behaviors are habits. Those things you can work on if students are present. And the academic piece will never come until we have those things that are habit in place, until we have behaviors and attendance in place. The academic piece is really, really hard to get to. But having said that, if, and Mr. Agan said we couldn't compare last year's data to this year's data, and I'm going to, because there was a little positive for me, as, as, as far as proficiency goes, in math, we raised four points in proficiency, even though test was a little bit different. But as far as the folks who make decisions about proficiency, our students, overall school-wide, gained four percent in math. Just looking at those proficiency levels, not necessarily those students, some of those students have gone on, but overall, for our school, it's four points better, and, and I'm going to take that and run with it. Even though we may not be able to technically compare those, I'm just going to, I'm going to do it that way. But again, some things that we are going to do to, to increase the, the student achievement in, in both math and ELA. We do have a Title I math feature that provides intervention to, to those students who are, we like to call them bubble kids, sometimes kids who may, may be on the fence, who could just need a little extra push. We have a program that we use called Reflex Math. It addresses basic fact fluency, addition, subtraction, multiplication, and division. And they, it's, it's an intervention piece as well that they use in computer labs. We, like Ranger, have decided that we want to go ahead and move forward with our math inventory and reading inventory, because our special ed teachers, our teachers in the classroom, they use this as part of their, their goals and their evaluations. This is data that they use and refer to often, so we decided to go ahead and purchase that at the school level for first through fifth grade. And I'm excited about that, because a lot of people were bummed that we weren't going to be able to do that anymore, but it's going to happen for us. The new textbook adoption, I've heard from most all of our people, and they're really pleased with what it has to offer. I, I think as far as assessments and just, just how closely, how, how much more aligned it is with, with what we, what our standards are, I think that there's always going to be that room for growth in math. And, and I'll mention that now, the, the benchmark assessments that we're, the new testing system, the benchmark assessments that we use, that will gauge the growth from the beginning of this year, we're actually in the process, and I know that all the other schools are in the county too. We're in the process of taking those now. We'll be able to use that data to really pinpoint deficiencies, really pinpoint what our students need, hone in on the things that we need to, and, and accelerate the kids who, who need that. We can use all that data and it's, it's going to be, if it's aligned with the state assessment, it's, I don't think we will have any choice but to see growth there, if we use that the way we should. We're going to use meter notebooks as part of the Leader in Me program, containing measurements of mathematics and ELA. When kids look at data, great things happen. I think a few years back, when, when I was here as a technology integration specialist, I remember, we, we hit data, data notebooks all the time. The, the fact that kids look at their data and want to improve those scores, they want to come tell you when they do a good job. They want everybody to know how well they're doing. And, and those, those Leader in Me notebooks, those measurements of, of that data, again, will drive that, those assessment scores up, I believe. We missed something like thirty days a few years back, and we still were making these gains in achievement, even periodically. And I think it's because we had such a focus and a set time for addressing those individual student data notebooks. For ELA, continuation of our I-Read program on the K, K-two level. We're also going to start something a little bit different this year. We're going to kind of pilot this with Jennifer Ashlock. It's going to be a, an intervention piece where in addition to their ninety-minute reading block, we're going to have forty minutes of intervention, split among our classroom teachers and our Title I folks, two Title I teachers and our Title I interventionists. So, they'll have smaller groups, probably ten to twelve kids. They will kind of rotate based on the skill needs that they have, and I'm hoping that, that this will, this will, we'll see gains when it comes time for those assessments as well. Already mentioned the reading inventory. Powell's Early Literacy is part of the Early Literacy Grant, but that data that we're still going to be using. We have lots of data for reading, tons of data for reading. So, anytime we can get a chance for some, some measurements of math, I'm, I'm all for that. We still have Izzy, and I'm sure you guys will hear about Izzy as you make your tours around. Kids come and they love to read to Izzy, and like somebody said earlier, they have to get in the flow of reading and want to read in order for that to benefit them. We're talking about small kids who may be able to tell Izzy what's happening in the pictures, and that's a start. So, we want to encourage that as well. By this time, everybody knows about the seven habits and Leader in Me. I, I want to thank my volunteers, staff, community, who've all stuck around, provided the dinner, and everything you do for our school every day. And I say this all the time, that, that we have people who can't be beat. You know, sometimes they're here more, more often than, than some other staff members. So, I'm very pleased to have, have somebody here who can help us reach out. As far as the community support goes, we've tried to make an effort to reach out, especially in the beginning of the year. We have something called a Community Back to School Bash. We did this last year with great results. The connections that we make in the beginning of the year last throughout that entire school year. And just to have kids excited about coming back into school on the first and second day, because they've been out before, that, that, the excitement of that Back to School Bash is, I think it's a really positive and a really positive thing for our school and community. A lot of times, people will come that you normally wouldn't get in school under normal And we still have our calming space. I know that's changed names over the course of a couple of years, but we, we did this three years ago to kind of address the needs that we have with kids who, who have needs that we can't accommodate in a regular setting. Sometimes somebody just needs a place to calm down. And it's worked out well. We keep a log for that, so that, so that everybody knows what's going on with that. We did have Energy Express this summer again. Ms. Tammy Bartram was the site coordinator for that. And I think, you know, getting back to things that will drive up achievement scores, there has to be some sort of after-school something for our student population. Because sometimes, I, I know our teachers give homework that kids may not even touch because nobody's there to help them with it, or nobody's there to make them pick it up and do it. It's hard enough when mom and dad are trying to get them to do homework and they don't, but it gives them an opportunity after school for extra help when they need it. It can also provide students with tutoring that they need, and that's just a soapbox and I'm going to get off that. Student leadership, we've made leaps and bounds in this area. I think our students are, are more, more leaders today than they, they have been, and we're sending those students on to Guyan Valley with, with more of an understanding of what being a leader is. That, and that goes from everything in there. We have multiple teams that students can serve on. They fill out applications, and everybody's accepted, for the most part. Everybody's accepted. They all get a shot at being a leader on one of these teams that you see. It might be kids who maybe answer the door as you're coming in, or showing you around the building, or things like community service team. We have them break down our boxes for our backpack program here that we do in-house. They take care of all that. Sometimes they pack as well, but I know they break down the boxes for us. And if you walk by this room down here, one, well, I wouldn't walk by now, but there's a stack of boxes in there. There was earlier. It might be gone by now. Just those types of things that get kids involved. Just those types of things that get kids involved and excited about being leaders and helping in a positive way. Anytime we can do that, we, we want to foster that. As far as school health, we have our normal dental care visits with Lincoln Primary Care Center, free breakfast and lunch. We do snacks in the afternoon. We, we do have, now we have, we split a counselor with Ranger, which, which makes it a little easier on everybody, even though Ms. Christine would probably like to have that full-time and I would like to have that full-time. It's still very much needed, and while, while Tammy is new to this, she stepped right in and done a great job, and she, she's definitely a great addition to our staff and great for our kids. More information on traumatized children, we, we started this collaborative three years ago with Aaron Weymeyer. He's out in Colorado. He's the dean of students at a private school, but he was a clinical psychologist, very knowledgeable about how to deal with difficult students, difficult situations, and that's been a relationship that we, we want to keep moving forward. And it, a lot of times, he talks about self-care for our staff. There've been times when I've gone into Ms. Earling's office and I've had to say, "Are you okay? Are you okay? You good?" Because I'm not. And, and that's, that says something, you know, I, it's, when you're in the, in throes and things are going down that you wouldn't dream of being bitten or have some sharp object thrown at you at a high velocity and you're trying to keep everything calm, you know, things like that happen, and, and a lot of times, we don't step back to kind of check in with each other, and that's a part of this conversation that we've had with him that's really, really helped our staff. Journey of Hope, it's going to be small group counseling, and I think that Ms., Dr. McCormick has, has talked with you guys about this maybe, but I think that's going to be big for some of it to address those issues that traumatized children face. And I mentioned that again. This kind of remains the same as it always has been. We have a secure entry into the building. Visitors, if, if they're not familiar, will be wearing a visitor pass. It's a funny story, and I'll, I'll be quiet here in just a minute, but our substitute secretary's husband came in one day and the full-time secretary didn't recognize him, chased him down the hall. "Sir, sir, who, who are you? What are you doing here?" And I was like, "Hey, calm down." This is, this is her husband, so we're, we're good. But if anybody's unfamiliar, you know, our staff does a great job at letting each other know what happens, what needs to happen. Have our Code Red drills that we follow. We have some teachers who are trained in. Alice, at one time, we had all teachers on staff, but we've had a turnover of staff members this year, and maybe they haven't been trained in that, and that's something I want to, want to explore. We have our crisis teams in place. We have a CPI, which is a, a de-escalation, our CPI restraint that, that we do. Mr. Hancock is our site coordinator for that. He can train other folks so that if we do have situations where we have to restrain kids and people have to be trained, then he can do that here rather than going somewhere else around the state or even taking a day off work and going to the central office. We can do that in-house as well. And I do have plans to talk with Mr. Lawrence or somebody else about providing another training for active shooter. This is the part that, you know, I get to, and I could have a laundry list of things. Right now, we're having new leaks all over the building because they sucked all the gravel off, and it created more leaks, but they're also putting a roof down, and that's what, that's the smell. Could be sweaty bodies by now, but the smell you smelled when you came in was the adhesive, so they're on that now, and it's, I'm excited about that. It's just pouring in here right now. I don't know how long that takes, but I'm excited about it. What I would like to see happen, and I didn't put this in School Dude or anything, I know that everybody would like a heads up, but just, we have students who come across our fifth grade students here, and sometimes it's a hard time. Mr. Hancock proved it today by trying to open the door with his key, and he couldn't get in, couldn't get in, and then I think Susan got up and helped him in. But we have kids sometimes who, when we come over as a whole group, we're all standing out there, pouring rain. Just something to cover that would be great. That would, that would be big for us.
Did you say you did or did not have that in?
I didn't. I did not.
I did not?
I did not because...
You got a reason for that?
No, not a good one. It's not a good reason. The same, well, I, I just didn't have it in there. I was taking things out at the last minute in this presentation.
I mentioned it before, Mr. Gossett.
Well, now, we did do that for the pre-K beforehand last year, and it was, it was done, so I'm sure that if, if that were a possibility, that all I'd have to do is put that in. I do, that program, the School Dude itself is very, I think it's, it's worked out well. I think that things that we ask for, sometimes things are overlooked or maybe put in as duplicates, and that's just a part of the monitoring that we have to do. That can get very tedious to go back and check the things that you put in, and very responsive from the maintenance department on those, those kinds of needs.
Well, I just said, it's a little divergent, I figured, isn't it? But also, some of us, we often kind of look at School Dude, and, and, you know, we want to see what some of the needs of schools are. And, you know, a lot of people aren't actually doing them, but at least we can see when things are accomplished. Some continue to be lagering, we might think it should be a higher priority, we're aware of it.
Do you need it just on this door?
Well, you know, we talked about having it go all the way across, but we have trucks that come in that would make that impossible. So just something in that area, just, I'm not sure how big it would need to be, just something to keep a group of students out of the elements. Other than that, that's all I've got. Any other questions?
You've heard me ask about, or mention the PLAs and the professional areas, and once again, I've kind of thought about giving you all the opportunity to ask this at any time, do some things you want to do. We've heard some suggestions and things that might be done, some might be done county-wide usually these times, but we'd like to hear your feedback on that throughout the year. Are you thinking something that is successful? Want to keep doing it, or is it you alter that in some way?
I think it'll be, just for the attendance sake, it'll be, it'll be a big boost in attendance for one. And we can always use, we can fill that time with all those needs that we have. We're always saying that we need more time.
Those are the two key things we're sitting there. One is your student attendance. You know, when we had half-days, I'll pick them at that, we don't have school today. And then the ability to actually plan what you want to do and have time to do it based on what your school's needs are. They're wrong. But Mr. Bitts, if you may, have been at a principal meeting down the road, golf, I don't know how to feel about it.
John, my question and comment to you is based the same as I made with Christina earlier. I remember when the sign, "School of Excellence" was being hoisted up out here, and now the school has fallen off. Are there things that you need? And I understand that data doesn't tell the whole story, but it, it does tell a story. It's the most objective measure for, for objective people to look at and see how, how a place is doing. I like your analogy that I don't care if the tests aren't the same, where we stand in relation to everybody else is the same, no matter the test. I like that analogy, but do you, you see the same kinds of problem affecting your school? And second question, what, what, what things could help? If anything?
Again, I'll go back to just giving teachers the tools to address those situations because we do have such a high population of kids in need. And that's not the only, that's not the only issue, but it's a big piece. I, I think that the more, the more tools they have in their toolbox to address those needs, there are times when teachers just get so emotionally invested in one situation that a student's going through, that, you know, the, the focus can't be, it can't be as strong as it would be had, if it was a normal situation. I, I think that keep the teachers above all else, they, if they could be faulted for anything, it would be, you know, trying to, trying to do too much for so many. In our situation, we do have that need. And I think for us, I, I don't think we haven't, we've gone without things that, I don't think, I think you guys have provided things for us that allowed us to go to trainings, allowed us to address a situation, but I think more of that would also be beneficial, especially if we've got a situation where new people are coming in. In our building this year especially, we've got eight new teachers, so keeping people in the buildings, that wasn't a problem for us. Everybody was at the retirement end of that, but now I think we'll see more and more of just keeping people around.
Well, and one thing I look at here, and I know that you can't compare apples to oranges, but I look at page three of your handout, what's being done at your school in regard to student safety. And there are two, four, six, seven line items on here. You know, when I went to school in Lincoln County many years ago, none of these things would have been on the list of what's going on. But now, because of the state of society and the state of the community and the things that go on, the problems that lead to some of the kids that we have that have these probably lifelong incurable issues, I don't know if I like what's called, but all of these things now are eating up valuable time and resources, and, and how do you go to school when you're afraid? And I can't imagine being in one of these big cities where you have the game roaming and roving around the outside of the school, you have armed security guards, but yeah, there's so much more you all have to do now than to just teach. And I, I understand the challenges, and it just, I know, I know it's more frustrating to you all than it is even to me sitting here as a board member, kind of just wish you all to teach.
Right. That'd be great. That'd be, that'd be great if we could. The last two days in my office, at the end of the day, have been spent on one particular incident involving student safety that took priority over everything else, over everything. You know, that, that's, so, you know, I'm not able to be out in the classroom at those times. I'm not able to make sure things are happening that need to be happening. Teachers involved with students in those particular situations, that weighs on their minds, so there's, there's a lot of, a lot of different things tie into that, but, you know, if we go back to habits, if we go back to getting them here so that we can have them here and, and address those behaviors, then eventually we'll see a rise of them. That's the only, that's the only way I can see that.
Thank you.
All right. Nothing else. Thank you, Ms. Lord. We know there are a lot of obstacles there, but you're all doing your best to provide that. Okay. That concludes our presentation. Bell outside. Our president, so let's go to the administrative section of our agenda. We have a motion to look at them, please. Mr. Welber sent it. Second by Mr. Curry.
Larry has an amended agenda. She's invited to see you because we did add an extra limit to that. Item A, school volunteers who on occasion may also serve as bus chaperones for athletic events, activity competitions for school average, and have completed volunteer orientation. Item B, approval of the 2018, 2019 Stack production plan for service buses. Item C is an agreement with Grayson Brown to provide transportation services for a handful of K-8 students according to the terms of the agreement of the student count. Item D, out-of-county student transfers in 2018, 2019 school. Item E, out-of-state travel with all these personnel. Item F, Marshall students, I'm sorry, WBU students and Lexus Arbals to perform observation at the annual PKA fall semester. Item G, Marshall student, Shalina Cory, that's our associate, Shalina Cory, to perform student teaching at West Samuel Elementary Fall Semester. And the added item is item H, out-of-state trip for Lincoln County High School students dating April to Washington DC with National Schools USA Conference September 20 through 26, 2018.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments about any of those? Not, is that a law yes then on the administrative side? Yes. All right, let's go to the finance section, House of Police. Gerald, Rowdy. Bill, are you...
Yes, sir. Scheduled invoices totaling $705,669.84. Attachment included in the minutes.
Yeah, that's almost three quarters of a million dollars.
Oh, I know.
Finance department, for some reason, has escalated?
[laughing]
Maybe that's why.
Right, not here.
That's why, so?
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Bill. Anybody have any, I guess you had any questions you would like to ask? Is that a law yes on those? All right. What kind of personnel do you have? Fred, Rowdy, Saczat? Okay, Bill, your, your next question.
Okay, let me get to it. I'll take care of this. Okay, item A, transfer of professional personnel. Item B, employment of substitute service personnel. Item C, transfer of service personnel. Item D, employment of extracurricular personnel. Item E, leave of absence. And item F, retirements and resignations. And also give you a handout here of where we are. We're, we're the same place we were last week, except we're hiring a social studies teacher at, at the high school. Also down underneath, added positions, those are the positions we've added this year. I'll be coming to you at the next meeting to abolish the sign language interpreter at Hamlin. That was a five-day posting. That child was in kindergarten but was placed back in preschool, and so we only need that person four days, and that person agreed to it, so we'll only be hiring them, we'll come out with a posting four days instead of five days a week, to save us a little bit of money. So, but that's, that's all I have.
Now, Bill, on these areas...
We're just not getting, we're not even getting candidates, no. And it, and it's across the state, you know, I, we work closely with all the personnel directors. We meet, try to meet about every six weeks with our surrounding counties, and it's, it's the same thing. Cabo County, how we have the alternative certification, they've never done it. They're going to start doing it. Mingo, when we first ended up doing it, they didn't do it. They're in now. It's just getting harder and harder to find certified teachers.
There was someone at the Teacher of the Year ceremony that we participated last week after her boss, someone from the department, I overheard saying there were nearly a thousand vacancies across the state. And if you... Say, did you see meeting, number 200 in Berkeley County?
Two fifty.
In one county?
Two fifty, yeah.
Probably one of the counties that pays higher than 12. What they say happens is even though they pay higher, they come in, maybe do some alternative programs, get certified, go across into Virginia, and pay more money.
They, they changed the law on alternative, the policy on alternative certification for that reason. Now you have to lease teach in West Virginia for two years. It don't have to be in those counties, but you have to stay in West Virginia for two years now, and that was the reason why they changed that law. But if you know some people out there that, that's had a good job, good, good person... But if you know some people out there that, that's had a good job, good, good person that, that has a four-year degree, that's interested in getting in to teach and send them, because we have this alternative pathway, which is an easy way for them to get their foot in the door, you know. But in, but in all these positions, I've said it before, all of them, we have quality subs right now, real good subs. Most of them are retired teachers, or some of the people, better people have been on the sub list and sub for years, so, but when that happens, then once another teacher misses, some of our better subs are not getting to go out there because they have these long-term positions, which creates a problem.
Administrators are the same way, aren't they? We have to use them long-term, they aren't...
We have to use them long-term, sometimes longer than they want a term.
Well, maybe they, but not necessarily family.
Yeah, sometimes they, they, yeah, yeah, that's true.
All right, and if we had to pick on you, that's it. All right. Nobody, nobody has any questions about that? Is that a long yes on personnel? Yes. All right. Okay, Mr. McKeef. I was going to say, I was just ready to give you a motion. You just told it, that's a little bit of a... Okay. All right. This is adjourned until Tuesday, September twenty-fifth, 2018, at one o'clock at the county board office. Motion placed, Mr. Wilpersen.
I'll say it.
Mr. Baker.
It's great, Carol, when they always... I don't mind if it's green or green.
I'm sitting here wondering.
Oh, goodness.
Oh, yes?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
I'll be fine.
You can make your case if you're there.
Okay.
I'm like that, I'm a lot of hands.
I think that's all.
I've been talking to you.
I've been told that.
I'm getting, I'm getting a little bit late.
So, so.
As soon as I get to work in the morning, coffee or...
Thank you, sir.
I don't know, my case is...
It's a lot, but every year, her message is...
Oh, my God. It's in the morning.
Wish it had something like that out there.
So, Sean, I've, I've always started to get...